This regular meeting of the Richlands Town Council will now come to order. Please let us stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity, again, to be here tonight to conduct the business for the town of Richlands. We pray for your guidance in everything that we do, that we choose the right things for the people and for this town, and for those who feel disappointed, we pray that they also will feel good about the town in which they live. We want to thank our veterans tonight on this very special day, November the 11th, for all the service that they have given this country, for those who've died for the country, and for those who are still here with us tonight to attest to their service to democracy and freedom and equality for all. In Christ Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Counsel, we have before us an agenda, and I have one suggestion or addition here. Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to approve the September 23rd, 2025 public hearing minutes. Is that correct? All right, so under minutes, if that would be under Roman numeral six, we'll just add A, B, C, D, E, we'll put F, and we'll put September 23rd, 2025, public hearing minutes. All right, are there any other additions, deletions to the agenda, members of council?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you add, I don't know what you want to call it, I guess like maybe ATVs in town under agenda items before letter A, please?
So we'll call it, Roman numeral nine, we'll call it 1A?
Yeah, yes, sir.
1A, and what do you, how's it titled, Laura?
I don't know, you want to just put like ATV operation on town roads?
ATV operation on town. All right, here's how I added it. Amanda, see if you have the same thing I do. We're going to call it Roman numeral nine, 1A, it'll be the first thing under the, on agenda items, ATV operation on town roads. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other additions, deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one request. Under attorney report, if we can make a letter E and include that resolution to sell real estate, and that resolution number would be R-2025-11-03.
Resolution to sell real estate?
Yes.
That's going to be Roman numeral 11E. And the resolution is 2025-11-03? Okay. Any other additions, deletions to the agenda, members of council? Any other additions or deletions to the agenda, members of council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
No move.
Laura makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jan has the second. Is there any discussion on this motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Okay. Hearing no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
It is unanimous, thank you, council. Now we have, we're on to Roman numeral, before we go any further, sorry, let me do one thing here, my fault. We have, under scheduled public speakers, we have Roman numeral seven, Greg Newberry, are there, Roman numeral eight, unscheduled public comments. Is there anyone in council chambers who wishes to speak under unscheduled public comments as three minutes? Yes, sir, Morgan Earp. All right, if it's okay with council, can we add Morgan? Any other persons in council chambers who wish to speak under unscheduled public comments? Hearing none, we will proceed, thank you. All right, so we're now on Roman numeral five, authorization to pay the bills. Are there any questions about the check register?
All of my questions were answered prior, so I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to pay the bills.
All right, we have a motion, authorize the town manager to pay the bills, is there a second?
Second.
Jan has the second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
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 It is unanimous, thank you, council. Now we're on Roman numeral six, minutes. We have several copies of minutes here, the minutes of September the 9th, 2025, regular scheduled meeting, September 23rd, 2025, special calls meeting, financial planning workshop, the minutes of October the 14th, 2025, public hearing, teen venture, the minutes of October 14th, 2025, joint public hearing with the planning commission, the minutes of October the 23rd, 2025, special call meeting, and the minutes of September the 23rd, 2025, public hearing minutes. Are there any questions, concerns about these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Rick makes the motion to accept all the minutes?
Second.
There is a second by Laura, is there any discussion on this motion, members of council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one, under C, that public hearing, if we could strike teen venture and put that as sale of real estate?
On the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Put, so the minutes should read, Roman numeral six, C, October 14th, 2025, public hearing, sale, S-A-L-E, of real estate? All right, is everyone, did everyone make note of that? We have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'll hear the motions to take, to take out the two days and put it soon on the list.
Okay, Laura?
Second.
So the motion altered stands, and the second is second. Is there any discussion on this motion to adopt all the minutes as presented? Hearing no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
It is unanimous, thank you, council. We now are on to Roman numeral seven, scheduled public comments, this is a five minute maximum, and would you keep the time, please? And Greg Newberry, Mr. Newberry, please come forth, and if you don't mind to state your name and address for the record, we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Newberry.
Greg Newberry, address 188 Pond Street, Powning Mill, Virginia, 24637. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the town council folks. I'm here on behalf of Casey Short Post 9640 at Powning Mill to ask the council and the mayor to, the bridge that's being repaired over on Front Street, if they would consider renaming that in the name of a WWII hero that was from Richlands, Virginia. His name is William Porter Little Jr. Mr. Liddell, I guess that's how you say it, served again, like I said, in WWII. He was awarded, he was a pharmacist mate, third class with the 1st Marine Division. He was awarded the Silver Star for conspicuous gallantry and action against the enemy while serving as a medical corpsman with the 1st Marine Division in action against the Japanese forces in Gualdo Canal, Solomon Islands on 18 August 1942. It says here in his bio, pharmacist mate, third class Little, continuously exposed himself to enemy machine gun and rothfire in order to administer to his wounded comrades during biggest attacks by air force on the Japanese held village of Manikewa, Gualdo Canal, Solomon Islands. His gallant actions and selfless devotion to duty without regard to his own safety were in keeping with the highest traditions of the United States Naval Service. Mr. Little was born on 27 January 1919 in Richlands, Virginia. He enlisted in the Navy on 2 July 1937. He was assigned to Company L, 5th Marine Regiment, 1st Marine Division during the Gualdo Canal Campaign. Pharmacist mate, third class Little was killed in action on 19 August 1942 for conspicuous gallantry and interpreted during the action against enemy Japanese forces. He's also has a boat, the USS Little, named after him. It was a Buckley-class destroyer escort of the United States Navy, was named in honor of pharmacist mate, third class, William P. Little, who was killed in action while serving the 1st Marine Division during the Battle of Gualdo Canal in 19 August, on 19 August 1942. He was posthumously awarded the Silver Star, and this, I believe that somebody has already approached the council about renaming that, I'm not 100% sure on that, but I would ask if you all would consider taking that into consideration to name that bridge after that fine gentleman who was from Richlands, Virginia. Thank you guys very much for hearing me, and I appreciate y'all.
Mr. Newberry, thank you, and I can't think of a better day than to have members of the VFW, our local post here, and all, are there any other veterans in the room besides members of the VFW? Glenn? Would all the veterans please stand up just a minute, please, just to be recognized by this council? Let's stand, council. Thank you.
And another thing I was told, and I'm not 100% sure, but Congressman Morgan Grith's office, if you all would agree to do this, his office would pay for whatever it needed to get that, get that bridge named after him.
Mr. Newberry, on behalf of the council, I'm speaking for myself really, but I have had conversations with you and Jim Boyd, and I believe Mr. Boyd has had conversations with other members of this council, and perhaps with the manager, I know that he has, and it would be a council decision entirely, when we're naming something so important as the bridge that connects our town, it really originally connected our town to name it after someone who gave their life in the service of the country, especially during WWII, or any conflict for that matter, a war. So I want to thank you very much for coming, and on behalf of the council, I want to say thank you to Jan White, thank you, thank you to Jan White and the town crew. If I start mentioning people, I'll leave someone out who helped to provide a wonderful occasion last evening at the old incubator building. Thank you, Seth, for providing that space to us, and all those in attendance. I cannot say personally how it moved me. I'm not a veteran, my father was a WWII vet, and I'm sure we all make those claims that are so important to us, and they're not lightly claimed. So if any other council, I think Jan wants to say something. Jan, would you like to speak? Did you want to say something?
I just want to thank everybody that came, and all of those that helped, a lot of the town employees and people outside the town, Karen Deal helped do some decorating, so we appreciate everything that was done for the veterans program, and we're real happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. So thank you, Mr. Newberry, I would ask council's consideration, and it will be up to this council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Pete, before we go further, you stood in the public hearing, would you like to say something at this point about Veterans Day? You were going to say thank you, do you want to say anything further?
Yeah, it's been a lot of observations that have been made, and we appreciate it. We're here, we're here, we can give that, and we appreciate it, man.
Thank you, Pete. Glenn, tell us about, how did you serve? I don't remember.
I'm a part of the Army.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, just for the moment, there are veterans here, would you mind just to say what you, what your area of service was? Yes, sir?
I served 36 years in the Army National Guard, 23 years active, did two tours in Iraq. The first one was from 2003 to 2005, Mosul, and if you are familiar with anything that happened during that time, a certain missile bomber occurred during that time, and that was my missile. I still have bad memories of that today, and the second tour I went with the 29th Infantry Division, all Fort Belvoir, Virginia, for a 8-month tour in Iraq, the second one.
Thank you, Greg, very much. I can speak for myself, but any of the members of council wish to speak, it's totally appropriate to honor these veterans who are here, and those who could not be with us tonight, and those who are long gone. Eleven, eleven, eleven. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to say anything for the veterans?
I just really enjoyed the program last night. Really appreciate all you guys for everything you've done. Too many people realize, don't realize that freedom's not free. And if, uh, the men and women that serve our country and stand up to fight and to go and to do things here and abroad, if it wasn't for that, none of us have the freedom to do this or to have robust discussions or to disagree or to do anything else that we do. That's what people misunderstand about the country that we live in. And I heard, uh, Minister Tex Sawyers last night was talking about, you know, how great our country is. We have disagreements in this country and people don't, you know, our country's pretty much divided down the middle right now. But even with all of that, no matter which side's in power, we still have the greatest nation on earth. We still have the most opportunities. We still have the best freedoms that are available, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of the press. You know, people can come in here and have robust conversations, can say what they want, can cuss us out, and that's all part of this. But I love that. I love this country because you can't do that in a communistic world. New York's, uh, has, has a commie in, in power now as their mayor. And, uh, I think they're going to find out that you can't say what you want to say, you can't do what you want to do in communism. It doesn't work that way. But if we have everything that we have because you men and women went and stood and did your part and served this nation to provide freedom to everyone that's here, and I'm very thankful for that today. We have a lot of, uh, heroes that are from Virginia. This gentleman, I, I went and read when, um, was it Jim that asked it? Yeah, when Jim Boyd asked us about that, I went and read that man's story and, and read up about him. I, I thought that was amazing. I think that's a, a very solid idea and I know we'll have a discussion about it. I don't see any reason why we can't accomplish that. I think it's a great idea. And I just, just again, thank you all so much, uh, for everything. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for the event last night. Just everything that you've done to serve this nation, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on council who wishes to say anything to honor these veterans?
I would just echo what everyone said and to thank you guys for your service. It's very small to say thank you, but just simply put, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Pete, I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry, what?
Yeah.
Absolutely. It is for a more perfect union, not that it is. Those are quotes. Thank you. Okay. Uh, thank you very much. What an honor to have you tonight. Okay, so we are on to Roman numeral eight, unscheduled public comments. This is three minutes, Morgan. And we'll keep time for you, Morgan. Thank you.
Sixteen eighteen Sixth Street. Um, so I'm gonna take him, take a minute for, for a second, but, uh, to the veterans that, uh, are leaving there, there's a, uh, another man, you know, I wanted to honor and put it for the record. And I don't, and I think today's the perfect day, but, um, my grandfather, um, Danny Harp, uh, served sixty-eight to seventy-two in Vietnam. And, uh, he did telecommunications all up and down the country. And, you know, and then, and then he came back and, uh, you know, he had his damages and so on and so forth. It was slow, but, you know, ultimately he passed in twenty nineteen from Agent Orange and from the cause of small cell lung cancer. So I mean, I know I can make a Facebook post, but I mean, I guess it's different when I say it in front of y'all. You know what I mean?
This is much more meaningful. Thank you.
So there's that and, ah, sorry. Gonna tear talking about him. Um, so, you know, just wanted to put that out there. Moving on to the rest. So I tell you what, um, we had a great discussion earlier on. I enjoyed it. And I just wanted to let y'all know that, you know, whatever is decided, you know, I am one hundred percent for, um, ATVs and so on and whatnot in town. All right? And I just wanted to echo that, to make my established firm, you know, clear. All right? For that, I believe it would be a great economical development and establishes new connections with everybody, you know, that may not be from here. This is how we get to intertwine and intermingle with, you know, people not from, not from the state, not, not from the county. And, you know, having them come meet to, you know, probably somewhere around here, you know, that would be amazing and then discuss their stories and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to reiterate that and, uh, you know, make my position thorough on the whole ordeal. I'm going home. I got work to do.
Thank you, Morgan. We are now on Roman numeral nine, agenda items, and we're on Roman numeral nine, one A, ATV operation on town roads of Richlands. Uh, Laura? You added it?
Uh, I did, because when we were talking about the, them coming off a mountain road, I'm, thing I've told everybody, I don't think I got to talk to Jordan about it really, but, um, I'm not against the ATVs coming into town and completely against them in any residential neighborhood unless the entire neighborhood would come and tell us that they were okay with it. But as I was researching all of this, I found that, um, the previous council actually passed an ordinance already to do this. However, they've put it with, that you don't have to be a licensed driver, um, that it goes through a lot of neighborhoods, goes through, um, alleyways. It's, it's very dangerous. Given our, uh, situation with the town manager, that I, I think we need to pull back on this ordinance, rescind this ordinance so that we can build it from the ground up of whatever Spearhead brings back to us of how they're going to get them into town. An alternate route, um, that would be, you know, Spearhead to, to find that route and come back and, and bring it up. But, um, given this ordinance right now, the way that it's written, um, the fact that you don't have to be a licensed driver, um, the fact that it can go through neighborhoods, and they did not give the opportunity for these neighborhoods that we have given to this neighborhood tonight. They just passed it and it's, it's not a very clear productive map. So I'm going to make a motion that, uh, we rescind ordinance number oh-two-zero-two-two dash zero-seven-zero-two. And I will say that, um, once we've got a new route from Spearhead that's not from, not through a residential area, um, that I am ready to rebuild this ordinance from the ground up.
Would you mind repeat the ordinance number, please, for the record?
Yes, sir. It's ordinance oh-dash-two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-seven-dash-zero-two.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, you gotta remember, the junior spearhead is the junior spearhead. We operate through legislation. That's how we got started. That was, I don't know where that came from, but I do make, I do remember the second of the motion that Larry Johnson made to put the sign asides off the road. I do remember the.
This wasn't you. This was, um, and I, this is the only ordinance. This is the only ordinance. So the reason that I'm asking that we rescind this ordinance is so that when Spearhead comes back and they say, hey, we found this, this route through whatever, not through a residential neighborhood, maybe, maybe they do, and maybe the residential neighborhood comes and says, hey, we are all for this, and then that's different. But I think we need to be able to build this from the ground up because the fact that an unlicensed driver can drive an ATV through our town, they can. They can. They, they can based on. That, that's part of my point. Okay, well, I've got a motion on the floor, so.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'm gonna second that because I think we need to build our own ordinance. I'm, I'm not real happy with this one.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to rescind the ordinance. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I just.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just want to reiterate to everyone here that if we rescind this ordinance tonight, that I will be the first to help build it from the ground up when we've got a new route, we've got a new town manager. But as this ordinance is written right now, you know, over the weekend, and I hope you don't mind me saying this, but Jan had people on her property at her store, you know, riding a golf cart and it's not illegal. I don't know how they came in on it, but, um, you know, but the fact alone that it's, you don't have to be licensed is concerning. If we amend this, it's going to take us at least thirty days, and I think it's vital to get this off of their books immediately before something bad happens and to give these streets and these neighborhoods the same opportunity that was afforded to Mountain Road tonight.
Is there any other discussion, uh, on this ordinance? Repeat, Mike, go ahead.
The only thing I would say is where it's already been an ordinance, this would be an amendment to the ordinance, which would call for the presentments, would be my understanding of that. What we would do in that situation, we would need to present it at two meetings, uh, and then the official vote would be at that second presentment to rescind or to amend the ordinance.
I don't want to amend it. I want to rescind, I want to abolish it.
Right. That would be my understanding as far as that would still be like an amendment of it to repeal it, like when we did that with the rec commission of maybe last year. Uh, we had that presented at, or read at two meetings at that point. Uh, that would be my understanding of changing the ordinance as written at this point.
So are you saying we can't rescind it? We have to amend it?
Well, I think you, you could repeal it, but that would be the process of repealing. It would be to, um, basically to amend to repeal it.
You'll have to advertise it for the next meeting, then advertise it for the second meeting and then repeal.
Yeah, just to.
First and second reading to repeal.
Correct.
But we, can we dispense the second reading at the next meeting? Because that's exactly how they passed this.
Right, yeah. And that was done in twenty twenty-two, I believe. So it would be a, you know, an easy thing. Of course, I would put a, a line through it. At this point, I don't know if there are any on-town roads. I know there are certain restrictions under that ordinance as far as that goes, but to amend the ordinance or repeal the ordinance, that would be my understanding of the procedure is presented it to, uh, when we changed the charter last year, we changed it to just two presentments instead of two readings. Um, when we changed that, that would be, you could waive the second reading. Uh, there's no sense in waiving up presentment, but if that would be the council's desire, I believe you could take a vote to do that.
So, Mike, to be clear, we have a motion and a second on the floor, but are you saying that we should amend the motion to say what? Based on what I hear?
Basically saying at this point, there's nothing to vote on because you're wanting to amend it, the ordinance. So you would have to go through the same process of amending the ordinance to have it at, to present it at two meetings, and then you could take the vote to repeal it at that second presentment.
I don't want to amend it. I want to repeal it.
Right. That would be a way, I mean, amending, repealing would be to amend the ordinance.
So even though, and I'm not trying to call you to the carpet, but you were the one who let them do this with presenting it at one meeting and they passed it through that night.
That would be in twenty twenty-two, that's how the charter was written at that time, was two readings, um, unless the second reading was dispensed with.
So, Mike, to me, to help me understand, so we conduct ourselves appropriately legally, what you would need instead of a motion right now, if I'm hearing you correctly, is direction from the council to present an ordinance that repeals the ordinance?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Are you saying that does not take a, a vote of the council right now?
Correct.
So could tonight be the first presentment since it's just repealing it?
Um, well, I mean, we, we haven't technically presented it. I mean, if you all decided that this would be a first presentment, I mean, I don't have it ready to go right here tonight to be able to, to present, but that would be council's desire. If you want to treat this as the first presentment and then at the next meeting I have it, that we present up there, that it would be repealed, then that would be the council's call at that point.
I mean.
To answer your question, there are no, there are no streets that VDOT has approved to sign the signs on the town roads.
And, and that very well may be true.
Here's my thinking, but I will defer to council. When we're voting on something like this, I like paper, but we have an ordinance, an old ordinance in front of us.
That lists the streets, literally lists the streets.
Yes, please, of course.
Okay, so this is the first, well, when you talked to me at the end of last week, when you brought this up and you had command to get this ready for you, it's the first time that I had ever heard of this particular ordinance. It's not on our books right now. It's not, it's not in our code book. So I was completely unaware that there was approved roads. We have been operating under the assumption, since I've worked here as the chief of police, that there was approval given by the council in twenty twenty-two. However, no streets have been designated. That's been the, that's been, anytime that we've been asked by citizens, that's been our go-to, is that there was a, was a vote, however, there was no designation. So the fact that there's designated streets is troublesome. You are correct, Rick. There's not been any talk with VDOT to approve any of the roads and there's no signage posted. So I want to make it abundantly clear that we do not still have, uh, approval through VDOT or appropriate signage for ATVs, UTVs, or golf carts to be on the town roads right now. Uh, I don't, I don't want folks watching from home and think, okay, well, we can use this as an opportunity to, to run our ATVs and UTVs on the roadways of Richlands because we, we do not, that, at this time, they cannot lawfully do that. I understand that the, what the councilwoman, Malo was saying, absolutely. It's a problem and we need to correct it. But we, we currently don't have the approved signage, so, and no VDOT approval.
I have a question to follow up. Thank you, Ron. Uh, we have an ordinance that was passed and signed, right? And is it, you see, it's not on the code book?
It's not in the current code book.
Well, uh, a question. Mike, when we have ordinances in this town, when we pass ordinance ordained by law, are those registered with the courthouse in Tasswell?
No, they're placed on the website, um, and the, it's on the town to keep a code book there in the courthouse.
But that is not in our code book?
Who would keep, who puts the, like if we, and I'm not blaming you guys, right? I'm just saying, 'cause most everybody up here is different, most everybody's down there different. We pass an ordinance today, who puts that in, whose responsibility is it to put that in the code book?
As far as the official code book, I would, I would think at that time it would be the clerk that keeps the, the code book and the resolutions as well as the minutes.
And I just want to point out that that is not Amanda either. She was not here when this happened.
And that's why I was gonna make it. I think this one was having a kind of transition, unfortunately, and it was just one of those that didn't make, everything that says Amanda is hard, she keeps a very detailed log and, you know, I'm confident that everything that's passed, she keeps it up and makes its way on our website and it's appropriate code book.
Mike, my follow-up question, I just want to be sure we're on legal ground. If it's, we, it's passed, apparently, is that right? Okay.
Passed and signed.
But if it's not in the code book, is it official or is it null and void?
No, I think it would be official if it's in the, the minutes that it's been passed.
Okay. I just wanted to ask you.
So.
Can I speak to, can I comment on this? So I think that the reason that that happened was because I believe Shanna Plaster came from the county and asked us to pass this ordinance because they were working with the county at the time to develop a trail route. And am I wrong in that? Does anybody else remember that?
I don't remember.
I think that is accurate back in twenty twenty-two.
That is correct.
I think that's accurate.
And I'll just say it, it was, it was Seth's first meeting. We had just had two council members resign, three actually, back and back resign.
And Mike Street appointed me, I think I was filling in as the first meeting that we came to.
It was his first meeting. I went back and walked. It was his first meeting. I went back and watched it. Shanna had come to the meeting, and she asked that, they passed it as an emergency, so they did. The financial director at the time, which was, let me just point out, clearly was not Ronnie, but the financial director at the time got involved and said it was a bad idea to only have licensed drivers, so they pulled back. There was some back and forth, but they pulled back on the licensed drivers, and so all of that, like, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I just know that this is.
You want to correct ordinance.
I, I just, yeah, it's dangerous. So if we, if you want a motion, because if we were amending it, and we were changing wording in this, I would not say, let this be the first presentment, but I am asking you to mark everything off of here so we can start from the ground up, work with the police chief, get a, work with Spearhead, get a clear route coming through here, clear ordinance. So I'm going to ask if you want it in a motion or however, I'll take back the other motion.
We have a motion and a second, so we'd need to withdraw something.
I'll withdraw it, but I make a motion that this is our first presentment to rescind this ordinance.
And just to alleviate some of the potential concerns, my understanding of when we, when this ordinance was drafted, it was taken basically out of state code, so that language of licensed driver or be accompanied with a licensed driver, I think that is from Virginia state code. I will confirm that, but, okay.
I, I'm not an attorney, but I did check, like, with the DMV, and Virginia state law says that you have to be a licensed driver to drive the ATVs on the, on the public roads. That's on the DMV website. I don't know. I mean, I went back and watched.
Can I say one other thing? The intent of thus passing that was not so that that became effective immediately, and that's probably why it didn't get passed on you, because I think the whole intent was, this is if a trail system gets open. We were laying out of groundwork because VDOT wanted us, now listen, again, back to, that was the first meeting that I sat here, but this is why. VDOT needed us to approve the roads, to have an ordinance in place, to, so that they could approve the route, which at that time, I think was come, I don't have the map in front of me, maybe it was coming across the road at the, at the traffic light at.
Mm-hmm. I went back and watched YouTube. This was, and again, I'm not trying to point fingers.
But here's what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, none of this is effective. So if you're listening to this at home, do not get on the road in a four-wheeler, a golf cart, anything else. They are going to ticket you. You will be ticketed. This was written so that we could get to where we had this approved for the trail system. This is not just for everyday average use. You can get out and ride on the roads. That is not what this is for. Prepare yourself to get a ticket if you're sitting at home, and you get a copy of this map, and you think you're going to ride your, your stuff.
You were told that it was, because you actually made the motion to pass it effective immediately, but again, your first meeting, you were told that it had already been approved, but it had not. Prior to you coming here, I sat through every meeting. Jan was at most of them with me. At some point, it was me and Jan sitting in the audience at, at every meeting, but to be quite honest, the map that is in here was drawn to get them, they were, the council was told that it had already been approved to come down Jewel Ridge, and it was supposed to come from Jewel Ridge, meet, they, because the council was told, you were told that night, that it was approved for them to come off of the road at Jewel Ridge, and they wanted the town of Richlands to allow it from Jewel Ridge and Richland's line into Richland.
Okay.
So you agreed to do it immediately, but the map that was written, and, you know, anybody can correct me, but it was public. You can watch it on YouTube. It was written to take it from Jewel Ridge to a specific restaurant that a former council member had ties to, and went through neighborhoods, went through alleys, went through any which nook and cranny they could to get to a specific street in town. That's just where I'm coming from with this.
The only VDOT road that is, in Richland or which it is in, is the avenue road to the park. That's the only section that's on.
And this wasn't Rick either.
But you had to have Spearhead pass.
This wasn't Rick either. I just want to point this out. It wasn't you either who told them this.
But if you look on back in the minutes, if you go way on back, Larry Johnson made a motion about it, and I say, and it passed, and Jan was like.
I mean, that, that stuff, though, if it's not an ordinance, that stuff is not, correct, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they just made a motion 10 years ago, and it's not an ordinance.
It wasn't. It would become an ordinance.
Well, this is the only ordinance that I've found.
So it's another one of them on back.
It's crazy town.
I have a question here. So we follow protocol from my point of view. We have a motion and a second. Laura rescinded the first motion. Jan, did you pull back your second? Okay. And then there's, Laura made another motion to have this as a first presentment to repeal this. Is that correct?
To repeal this ordinance. Yes, sir.
All right. I'm trying to follow the order of business here. So there is a motion now on the floor. Is there a second to this motion? Jan has the second to the motion. This will, Laura, please state clearly for the records. We know, I think I know what you're saying, but I'd rather you say it, okay?
Yeah, it's, if we rescind this and give ourselves a clean slate, a fresh start from the ground up, then we are able to sit down with the public safety side of the town and Spearhead and this council, and be able to build a safe, proper ordinance of how we can, we can do this on the main loop through Front and Second Street.
And the ordinance, I mean, the motion, though, is to have this as a first presentment.
That this would be the first presentment to repeal this ordinance.
Are you following? Does council understand, I want to be clear, not just intent, but what the actual motion is, is this will, as a, be, represent a first presentment. Is that correct?
Correct. This would not be a vote necessarily to repeal the ordinance at this time. It'd be the first presentment and have that at the next meeting to have the vote for a rescindment or a repeal of that. Well, no, if, I think if you all want to call this the presentment.
I think it's proper, yeah. Okay, may I ask him? Okay. So there's a motion made by Laura and seconded by Jan on the floor for this to be a first presentment.
Hold up.
Yeah.
I'm asking for discussion.
No, I, I, I got you, man. I'm sorry. I just, you can't, we can't supplement the rules. If, if the rules were supplemented before, none of us knew that, but we can't, two wrongs don't make a right. If we have to do it, and Mike's telling us, he's giving us legal counsel that says that we need to advertise this and do it twice, it's not going to change anything. These are not in effect. Nobody can ride on these roads. If we do it, if we do it the proper way, that's fine. Is that, am I wrong, Mike?
Well, I would just say, where this is not creating a new tax or anything like that, I, I don't think you would have to advertise that under Richland's charter or code.
Did you not just tell us that a minute ago, though?
Would not advertise presentments.
That's not what he said. He said that, and because this is repealing, all you're doing is marking it out, right? And I said specifically, if we were amending this to change a word, I would not say, let this be the first presentment. To be quite honest with you, and maybe I shouldn't say this, but we had a FOIA request for this very thing in which we said this does not exist. It does exist.
But it hadn't been codified, and no one here knew that it did.
It was no, yeah, I don't blame that on anybody sitting down here. I don't blame it on anybody in Town Hall, but I think the longer that this stays on the book is not a good situation for us. So if, like I said, if this were changing any word about it, I would say this is not the first presentment, but because this is just marking every single thing out, and we don't, it's not creating something new, and I guess not really taking anything away. It's just protecting the town. I'm okay with it being a first presentment.
Okay, so, Mike, can you define presentment? Like, what does that entail?
We went through this last year. It's kind of what the council thinks it is. What we.
Oh, we don't have very opinions in.
Well, what we, this, this was, you know, last year when we amended it, when we changed the charter. Under the charter, we had to have two readings of any ordinance.
Familiar.
All right. Here, we've been presented that there's an ordinance here.
I haven't seen anything.
It should have been in your packet.
I just, I don't.
I had them printed to include in everyone's packet.
Either way, there, there's an ordinance here that calls for Section 72.140 through 72.144 of the Richland's Town Code. So in 2022, this was passed at a regular meeting for Richland's Town Council.
I'm familiar.
Okay. So at that time, you had to read the ordinance for it to be, to become effective. Last year, when we changed the ordinance, to take out the word read, and we put presented, I think at that time, the council was like, we can put it on the board, like we have the resolution here, put that on there, make it known to people that you're wanting to enact a new ordinance or amend an ordinance or repeal an ordinance. That would be what the council would have to do to do any of that with an ordinance. At this point, we're trying to change an ordinance or repeal an ordinance, which would be a change.
Mm-hmm.
So all I'm saying is, is you need to do that at two meetings, to present it at two meetings, as the current charter now says.
So I, I don't see it. Is it on the online one? Like, is it on what we posted on Facebook?
We didn't post it on Facebook, but it is on the website.
That's why I don't have it. Okay. Not sure I like that, but I, I just think that is a hairy situation. I haven't seen it, and that's okay, that everybody else got it back, and no big deal on that. I get mine emailed, completely different scenario. No, not a problem there. I feel like the citizens need to see it. We can't just pick and choose what we show. That's my only concern. I, is it right or wrong? I don't know.
Nothing was on Facebook. I, I don't know why. It is in the packet that the public has.
But it wasn't on the junk?
Yes, well.
No.
No, I got email.
No, it was not on the junk.
So if that's the case, and I'm just going to say it, I know you're pushing back, but you really shouldn't be in the discussion, because you're the chairman for Spearhead Trails.
I don't get paid for it.
It doesn't matter. I've contacted the FOIA council, the Conflict of Interest, the Conflict of Interest Act council, and we amend the agendas all the time, and if that's the case, then we're not going to talk about Mike's resolution, right? If this is what we're saying, if this is your, your, your pushback.
You're supposed to present it. This is supposed to be in the presentation.
Okay, well, then Mike's resolution's not presented, so it's fine. It's fine, because we all know what that resolution is. So if this is how we're going to be, then Mike's resolution is being presented for the first time tonight. He added it to the agenda, so you don't want to talk about Mike's resolution either?
I don't.
I have a, a, a thought, and it's up to council. My thinking is, I'm hearing that there is a, a concern that we need to get rid of this ordinance, plain language, and so if there's a motion and a second on the floor to use this as a first presentment, there are two ways of approaching it. One is move forward with the ordinance, with the motion as is, or to have, if the, if, if that motion is rescinded, have a first presentment in writing at our next meeting, and then have a second presentment at the next meeting, or, we used to call it to dispense with the second reading and pass it as an emergency measure. So I'm asking, can we pass it as a second presentment and, and use a second presentment and pass it as an emergency measure?
We should just vote.
But, well, I just don't understand, like, what is the immediate reason?
Wait a minute, please, just, I'm asking.
Are you asking for the vote today?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm asking, Mike, if there is a motion to have a piece of paper in front of us at the next meeting in December, if that motion passes, instead of the motion tonight, if that motion passes, because you're being requested by council to have a document that rescinds or repeals the ordinance, if that passes at the December meeting after a first presentment, can we have a motion to dispense with a second presentment and pass it as an emergency measure?
My understanding of the charter now would be that it just has to be presented at two meetings. We took away the, the readings.
How about the emergency measures?
I think we took that out with the readings, since it would be two presentments.
That's not in there?
I believe so. When we amended the charter last year.
Are you definitive? I'm asking.
No, I'm, I'm just saying what the charter says at this point.
I'm just, yeah, that, I mean, you're definitive, that's what it is right now. I'm just asking. I'm not trying to trip you up either.
Can I call for a question, please?
Sure. We have a call for the question. There's, all, is there any further discussion?
Can you restate the motion?
Yeah. I make a motion that this is the first presentment for the repeal of ordinance
And Jan has the second. Is that correct? Okay. Hearing a call for the question, we will have a roll call vote. Amanda, please.
Seth?
No.
Rick?
No.
Jordan?
No.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Now, if you want to make a motion to present it at the next meeting, I'll.
No, I'm not, but I'm going to say, I am sick and fucking tired of being treated differently on this council, every time. So you three better keep the same energy when you get to Mike's resolution, and we all know you won't, but let's do it.
Laura, may I suggest, I realize in the heat of the moment, things get really.
All right, I shouldn't have said it.
It's okay. I'm not here to reprimand you. This is not my point. If you want something to happen, I would suggest that we go with the suggestion to have a first presentment at the next meeting.
I would say that anybody who's gotten a ticket from this, Shay Cook, if you're listening, I'll send it to you, my friend. I would come straight after us on it.
Okay. Okay. So is there anyone else who wishes to ask Mike to have a first, a presentment? Hearing no further comments, we will go to agenda item 9A, CDBG Urgent Need Grant Resolution, R-20251101. Matt Boyd, Angela Beaver. Matt, please come up and tell us who you are for the record.
Hey, good evening. My name is Matt Boyd, with the Commonwealth of Platteville Planning District Commissioner, and I am a planner. I am working with Angie Beavers on this project. About midway through the year, we got awarded for the urgent need project down here. I believe we're getting a generator or two, and tonight we just have a couple documents that need signed. As you can see on screen, there is a resolution, but I am told that there is more documents on here that need to be signed. So the reason why I'm here tonight is just to make my presence known, and just to answer any questions that the board might have. So if anyone has any question about what's being signed, just let me know.
Now, if I'm correct here, we're looking at Resolution R-20251101. So I'm not going to read it. We don't have to read them anymore, but this is from the VDHC. D. Okay. Any questions for Matt? Anyone? Matt, how far did you drive to get here tonight?
Oh, yes, I'm from Buchanan County.
Okay, where do you live?
Hurricane Creek, Rhode.
Where? Where, Runde?
Council, Virginia.
Council, okay. Just for the record.
Yeah, just for the record.
Thank you.
Do you need my address for the record?
Well, I like it. We don't have to do it, but I think it's nice. In case you have a question, we know where to get you.
Sure.
Would you record that for the minutes, please? Thank you, Mike, Matt. We appreciate it.
Y'all have a good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
You too.
Unfortunately, we can't pass this tonight because it won't take effect for 30 days, and I'm sorry. We need to, we, I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess, and I would like Amanda to print this charter off, and everybody take a few minutes to flip and read what we're doing here, because if we're going to hold me to it, then all of us are going to be held to it, and including, I'm sorry, Mike, but including you two, because your emergency question is still in this charter.
10-minute recess. Thank you.
Amanda, please print the charters off for all of us. If you, if you Google Richland for any county, we'll talk about it on the. If you Google Richland's Urgent Need Project, we'll talk about it on the...